Calling this regular meeting to order, would you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is roll call. Would you start voting, please? Holly?
All councilors present, an aquorum has been declared.
Thank you. Next up is the agenda of approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is none.
No? Thank you.
If not, Mayor, I'll make the motion we approve. The agenda is presented.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda approval? Seeing none, start voting, please. Am I missing one? Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up is citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. Tonight, we have one card from Karen Lemke. Thank you for being here, Karen. Please identify yourself and your address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Karen Lemke. I live at 1424 Second Street in Alamosa. And I'm here to speak briefly with you in support of the GOCO application for the Rio Grande Healthy Living Park process that we've been doing. And I know Julie Mordecai has a prepared presentation for you later today. But I just want to speak to you as the board president of the Local Foods Coalition, a member of the Rio Grande Healthy Living Park Committee, about our enthusiasm and the work that we've put in and the many different elements that are coming together to make this be a successful project for our community. And I see this bit, this piece of the GOCO project, which you'll learn more about later this evening, as sort of the keystone in the arch of many different elements that are fitting together like puzzle pieces. And this is just that last little piece that we're hopeful that you'll be in supportive. So, thank you very much and look forward to the meeting.
Thank you, Karen.
Mayor, in reference to those comments, we were not anticipating a presentation, so I don't know if you'd want to invite those comments at this point in time on the agenda or if you would want to open the agenda up at that time.
I would be in favor of them making their comments at this point in time during citizen comments. So if you have some comments, please come up forward. Thank you for being here, Julie.
Thank you.
Identify yourself and your address for the record, please.
Julie Mordecai. I'm the...I live at 12 Cottonwood Place. And I'm the director of the Rio Grande Healthy Living Park. So, I am really excited. I was chosen after a search to be the director of the Healthy Living Park. And I'm fully committed, as is the committee that hired me, to ensure that this park becomes a true asset in Alamosa and the San Luis Valley. I wanted to give you a quick update because of what's going on. We're in the middle of a planning process with input from 150 individuals that will impact the design of this park. And we will be presenting a conceptual plan in May to get feedback from the community. We are hiring a land manager, and he or she will start the beginning of March. So if you know anyone who's good at working out there, let us know and get us a resume. The Guatemalan community plans to expand their garden this summer. And we will be piloting a fruit orchard this summer. And we are vigilantly searching for resources to fund the project from the Gates Family Foundation, the Department of Agriculture, to provide funding for the full build-out of this park. Many funders are interested in this dynamic and innovative project. After meeting with GOCO, it was two weeks ago, we have been given the green light to apply for a GOCO open space funding this spring as a potential match to our likely other foundation funder. So TPL may pay off the bridge loan and convey the property to LFC as its permanent owner. And that's the Local Foods Coalition. Based on that meeting, we are very optimistic that we will be able to secure the funding that we need to pay off the bridge loan and cover at least a portion of operating and direct costs associated with the transaction while also getting GOCO invested in the project, which should lead to opportunities to secure GOCO funding for the eventual development of the park. The GOCO grant application is due on March 11, so we need to move rather quickly. GOCO has indicated that they would be fine with simply granting a trail easement to the city of Alamosa for the existing trail on the property. That way, the trail system will be under your management, which is a critical goal for both GOCO and our likely other funder, as well as our goal. We have a support letter from the county of Alamosa and need one from the city in order to qualify for this funding, which in the end allows us to convey these trail easements to the community. In order for TPL to convey permanent ownership of the property to the Local Foods Coalition, our local nonprofit, the property must be protected by a conservation easement to ensure that it will not be subdivided or developed in the future. Fortunately, conservation easements are very flexible, and we will be able to draft an easement that allows for the agricultural use of the property and the development of community spaces, commercial kitchen buildings, and other aspects of the project. Colorado Open Lands...is my time up?
It is at three minutes, but I know you were expecting a presentation, so...
Okay, I'm almost done. It's one more minute. Colorado Open Lands, a statewide land trust with an extensive history in the San Luis Valley, is committed to bringing...being the holder of that conservation easement, as well as a long-term partner and resource for the project. The conservation easement will not be drafted until the community planning and design process is completed, as that will ultimately determine what kind of future uses the easement will need to accommodate. Needless to say, we are very pleased to be at a point where we seem to have a clear line to secure a substantial amount of funding to pay off a substantial amount of the bridge loan, if not all of it. As a result, it is critical that we move forward with a GOCO grant application this spring. This project will prove to be a valuable asset for Alamosa and will bring tourism, economic vitality, as well as resources to those most vulnerable in our community.
Thank you, Julie. Certainly appreciate that. And of course, you realize we're going to be discussing this under regular business this evening.
I know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Coleman?
Julie and Karen, I would like to commend you all and your organization for the effort that you've put into getting your park funded. I think it's going to be a great project for the community as a whole. And I also appreciate you keeping the trail system open to the public at large. That's a great deed. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gutierrez?
Yes. Going back to the regular business portion where we'll discuss this, we'll allow questions for Ms. Mordecai at the time.
I believe so.
The way it sounded, it was just like it was just going to be some kind of motion, and that was it.
Well, normally, on the agenda, you would have your council discussion, and then you would vote on it. If you had questions from anyone, we could get those questions answered.
Okay.
We must have had a miscommunication on the expectation to do an actual presentation. We weren't expecting that.
I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next up is ceremonial items. Tonight, we have a proclamation in recognition of National Children's Dental Health Month. And I believe we have a representative in the audience. Would you please come up to the podium, introduce yourself and your staff? Dr. Mejia? And tell us a little bit about Children's Dental Health Month, if you don't mind. Please give us your name and your address for the record, please.
Okay, Eva Mejia. And my practice is 100 Edison Avenue, Suite B here in Alamosa. And I'm going to let the girls introduce themselves.
Asha Medina? Do I have to give my address, too? Home address or is her work address enough?
Hi, I'm Janet Romo, office manager for Dr. Mejia.
Thank you.
So, Children's Dental Health Awareness actually started as a one-day event in Cleveland, Ohio back in 1941. And it's actually has grown to be a national event that's promoted for the whole month of February. Because it's really important for children to establish good attitude and habits while they're young, because this allows them to maintain good oral health throughout their life. So, we like to encourage parents and family members to bring their children to see their dentist once they have all their baby teeth or no later than the age of two or three. And this allows for children to get acquainted with the dental experience in a fun environment. But not only that, but there's also treatments that can be applied to prevent decay. So it's really important to promote this oral health for children. It's also a good opportunity for the parents to be educated about oral health and diet. So I just want to thank the mayor for putting out this proclamation and helping us promote the importance of children's dental health.
Thank you, Dr. Mejia. I will read this proclamation. And after I sign it, we will go down and present it to you, ladies. So, I will read this proclamation. "In recognition of National Children's Dental Health Month, whereas National Children's Dental Health Month, NCDHM, began as a one-day event in Cleveland, Ohio on February 3, 1941, the American Dental Association held the first national observance of Children's Dental Health Day on February 8, 1949. In 1981, the program was extended to a month-long observance known today as National Children's Dental Health Month. Since 1941, the observance has grown from a two-city event into a national program. Whereas each February, the American Dental Association, ADA, sponsors National Children's Dental Health Month to raise awareness about the importance of oral health in children. And whereas, NCDHM, messages and materials have reached millions of people in communities across the country. And whereas, the 2015 National Children's Dental Health Month campaign slogan is 'Defeat Monster Mouth.' And whereas, the month-long National Health Observance brings together thousands of dedicated dental professionals, healthcare providers, and educators to promote the benefits of good oral health to children, their caregivers, teachers, and many others. And whereas, the development of good dental habits in an early age, along with regular dental visits, help children get a good start in the lifetime of healthy teeth and gums. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed that I, Joseph Lucero, on behalf of the Alamosa City Council, proclaim February as National Children's Dental Health Month. I encourage every parent and/or guardian to take their children to a local dentist. A lasting smile starts with great oral health habits, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Alamosa this 18th day of February 2015." I will sign this, and we will be down. With a smile! Those are some of the fun things we do. And let's not be remiss in remembering that there's a gentleman back there that is also a big part of that dental health program, and that's Mr. Mejia. Thank you for being here this evening, sir. Next up, we'll move on to Consent Calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we received the January 2015 expenditure report, approved the minutes of the regular meeting February 4, 2015, and received the January 2015 monthly reports. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Mayor, if there's no discussion, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A as presented.
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? If not, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff, public works. Thank you for being here, Pat. We have a public hearing on ordinance number 3-2015, reducing off-street parking requirements for eating and drinking establishments and other auditoriums and meeting rooms, as well as a resolution 2-2015, finding of substantial compliance in the Tucker Wagner annexation. Thank you, Pat.
Good evening, counsel. Like you said, this is the second reading for an ordinance amendment that would reduce off-street parking requirements for eating and drinking establishments and other auditoriums and meeting rooms. Recently, while reviewing a couple of different potential economic development projects, the subject of off-street parking requirements was a hot topic. The result of those discussions has been a review of our current regulations and requirements and how they compare to other cities in the region and the recommendations and model ordinances of the Institute of Traffic Engineers. While our ordinances seem to be well in line in most areas, this review has indicated quite a discrepancy between our requirements and those of other cities in two different use groups: eating and drinking establishments and auditoriums and meeting rooms. This reduction, if you approve it, will reduce the required parking spaces. It'll change one of the projects, the restaurant project, from a requirement of 99 to 54. And one of the projects will change from nearly 500 required spaces to 240, depending on final plans. Both of these changes will align us better with other cities in the region and will place us near the more conservative end of the recommendations published by the Institute of Traffic Engineers.
Thank you, Pat. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions of Pat at this point? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number 3, 2015. Anyone in the audience to speak in favor or against ordinance 3, 2015? Please approach the podium. Identify yourself and your address for the record, please. Mr. McCann?
Dan McCann, 1809 Sunset, Alamosa. Recently, and I take my Corvettes and go for a drive just to get away from things and stuff, and having fun alone, and I drove down our city, Main Street. And boy, it really looked neat. People were having fun. The place was filled up. And we have a small town. And what you're doing here, you're going to make the right decision. And people are making money here again. College students are coming back. And then their parents came back. You got games here. A lot of stuff is going on here. High schools and people eating out. And all you're going to do is the best you can if you reduce it or enlarge it. This is a small town. You can drive through here and, you know, in 25 seconds, Main Street. People are doing real well here. And whatever the decision the city council makes, things are looking a lot better. And we make a lot of sales tax revenue from our restaurants and our bars and stuff. We have the train that stops here. And they're going to do something about the Elephant Place. And I know, and they're making the city better. Because a lot of towns would have happened. They go to the outskirts, and the towns are dying. And I love Montevista. I love the high school there. Go to Montevista. Things are closing up. Usually, when I get to events, I get there real close to when the event goes on. They had one for Hanklin, the ceremony for death and everything. And I got there an hour early, one town, an hour early, and I walked around the town. It just really looked bad. They're doing the best they can. They put in curbs and gutters. And, you know, and it's true. And the Valley Courier promotes Shop the Valley. It's true if you can. You know, if the difference in price is 50%, that's ridiculous. So what do you think you do to make things better? And our law enforcement officers have to enforce this stuff. They have plenty to do. Good luck, APD.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to visit on ordinance number 3, 2015? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 3, 2015, bring it to counsel for discussion or decision.
I just have a comment, Mayor. I just think, thank Pat for bringing this to the council, because I think this is a good move in the right direction to create development in the downtown area. And it also is going to be attractive to future developers. So I appreciate that.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Echo what Ty said. I think this is a positive for our community. Thank you, Pat, for looking into this. We're in competition for these establishments with the cities that we're checking with. And we have to be equal or not better to those cities. When we're requiring way more than what they're requiring, it's really hard for us to compete for those restaurants and businesses. So thanks for bringing us up to date. And I think this will be a really good thing for our town.
Counselor Gillespie?
Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll make the motion we approve ordinance number 3, 2015, reducing the off-street parking requirements for eating and drinking establishments and other auditoriums and meeting rooms.
I will second. I have a motion and a second on ordinance number 3, 2015. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to resolution 2-2015. Pat?
Good evening again, counsel. This is a finding of substantial compliance for the Tucker Wagner annexation. It's a property on the north side of West 8th Street, just north of the new elementary schools. It's one of 14 existing enclaves within the city. It is already served on both sides by paved streets. It has water and sewer services to the property. The south side of the property was provided with curb cuts as a part of the West 8th Street project last summer. This finding of substantial compliance, this is the first of four times you'll see this. It is just simply you identifying the fact that the application and everything is substantially complete. It in no way obligates you to annex the property.
Thank you, Pat. Does counsel have any questions or comments? Thank you, Pat. Is there any further discussion on resolution 2-2015?
If not, Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion we pass Resolution 2-2015, finding substantial compliance for Tucker Wagner annexation.
Second? I have a motion and a second on resolution 22-2015. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we'll...next on, we'll move up to City Manager Legal, a motion to approve letter of support for the Trust for Public Lands GOCO application. Heather?
Essentially, I think Julie did a great job of explaining the work that they have done, the goals that they have coming up really soon, and the purpose of this letter. So I think at this point, there's nothing I can add. You had the letter attached. So if there's questions regarding that, I know they're still in the audience as well and can answer those questions.
Thank you, Heather. I know this has been an issue that counsel has struggled with, with some of the previous issues and the previous owner. And so this may be something that counsel wants to talk about or discuss or just move on. Counselor Gutierrez?
I guess I'll go ahead and start. This is...they're applying for the GOCO monies themselves as an application. We're just writing a letter of support. I understand that part. I guess my question is, how is this going to affect us in the future as far as...we've got such a long list of GOCO projects out there. Is this going to create any conflicts as far as us having to present for GOCO monies?
I would not anticipate any. They're doing it through the open space, which is a different fund than we usually do from our grant. We actually are potentially foregoing this next grant cycle because we don't have a project ready to go with the potential match. So since it's coming under a different agency and not the city of Alamosa, I don't see really any conflict. And it's a chance to show our support as a partner for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. We've had plenty of discussion over this property over the past couple years. As you know, my biggest goal of this is that the city maintain the trail system. And this support letter clearly shows that they're willing to do that. There's going to be a public trail easement, protecting those trails. So in my opinion, it meets all the goals that I was looking for. And I think the counsel was looking for. So I am in support of this. And I wish you guys good luck.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Gillespie?
Yeah, I had the same concern that Charlie did. I was afraid this would cause one of our projects to be extended further out. But after hearing from Heather that we don't have anything ready to go for this cycle and support of the trail system, I guess I'm in support of this also. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson? If there's no other comment or discussion, I move that we approve a letter of support for the Trust for Public Lands GOCO application.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on letter of support for public lands? Seeing none? Start voting, please. Hold on. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we'll move on to committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, I do. I have a committee report from the Alamosa Tourism Development Board. Had an extremely long meeting. We took a couple presentations for funding. One of them was from the railroad. This is probably the most interesting and what I will cover the most. They have a really terrific lineup this year, their summer concert series. They've added some people, and he put it in his thing, so I think I can tell you who they've secured and who is on their concert series. First thing is that they've secured a three-hundred-seat coach set to help them transport people to their concert series. They felt like they weren't getting enough people up there, and they didn't have the capacity to do that, so they've added, he was able to secure a set of coaches, three-hundred cars in addition to what they already, or three-hundred capacity in addition to what they already had. Also, they're teaming with the rodeo, and they are bringing in Marchestnut to do a concert with the rodeo. And they are also partnering, doing partnerships with the barbecue and Early Iron to do concerts and train rides during those events. They have changed their concert series to Mountain Rail's Live Music Festival. It was formerly AMF, and I guess that there's about twenty American music festivals, or so they've changed their name because of that. So they have rebooked the Nitty-Gritty Dirt Band, retained Bogus and Juice Newton, Michael Martin Murphy, and they've added Marchestnut and Exile. And he's increased his entertainment expense approximately a hundred thousand dollars for this season. Also, he is, his advertising expense directly related to Alamosa and the train and his concert series will exceed two-hundred thousand dollars, or thirty percent of the total fare box for this year. Pretty interesting stats. I'll leave this in the read file. There's a couple more interesting facts in here, and that is probably the best part. There was, we had some discussion around the motorway building. They hired an architect, and he gave initial costs and ideas for that project. I passed that information to Heather, and she'll have that to share if anyone's interested in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. That information is always valuable to us. Counselor Grego?
I don't know whether to talk about the CML Legislative Workshop now or counsel comment. Now? Okay. Well, the mayor, myself, Michael, and Heather attended the annual CML Legislative Work Session, and we've got a chance to visit with some legislators. CML went over, went through some of the, a list of bills that are going to probably eventually affect different communities, what they support, what they don't support. We broke into different groups. Myself and Michael, we attended the housing issue. I think that would have been right at Mr. Coleman's area, but it was quite a, quite a good group of people that presented there. Affordable housing is a huge issue in the Colorado municipalities. Housing costs have skyrocketed, and you probably know that, Mr. Coleman, and so they gave out some good information and how to apply for a different grant and so forth. And I believe the mayor and Heather attended the telecommunications and broadband. But altogether, it was quite a informative day where we got to visit with some of the new cabinet members that were, that took over now that the new session started for the governor. So I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything else to it, Mayor or Michael or so.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Heather and I did attend the telecommunications and broadband get-together or issue. She can probably tell you a little bit more about that. Dr. Rick Smith from Bayfield was there and visited briefly with the entire group about some of the hurdles that they have overcome in trying to get broadband into their city and into that area that they're in. Anyway, some of that information is vital for communities that are looking to expand their services in that area, and I guess you'd call it, what would you call, expanding what, Heather? That would, fiber? Is that what, the more fiber a community has, actually, the more economically attractive you become? Because everybody is looking at fiber now, and the ability to have fiber brought into a community, because that, that just means communication is just right there for the taking. And so I know that Jim and Heather have been talking about, especially Jim is right on top of this, so it's one of those things where, if nothing else, we made some contacts, Jim, Heather, and I made some contacts, and so I'm sure they're going to share that with you, and I know you're on top of that. But anyway, there's just so much information at these legislative sessions that it's kind of hard to get a handle on all of it, but as we all know, the legislative workshop is basically there to outline what the Colorado Municipal League's stance is on a lot of the different bills that are coming forward before the legislature, and how either home rule or statutory towns are affected by keeping it local or having, making sure that the governing stays local. And so there were a few other things. I did attend the Policy Committee Meeting on Friday, and one of the interesting things that was discussed there, of course, was economic development, and we're all interested in economic development. I did share some of that information with Heather. There was a group out of Colorado, little town south of Denver. Oh, what is it? Castle Rock. See, I have these, I have these blocks. But anyway, there was a group out of Castle Rock that had an excellent presentation, dealt with community development block grants, as well as talking about supporting existing employers, attracting new employers, growing new companies, and educating the community about the systems that are in place. Talked about really making sure that you support your primary employer, whoever that might be, and we are lucky here in Alamosa because we have so many primary employers. We have educational systems, retail, and all sorts of different things. But it was a great legislative session, and I encourage other counselors to attend next year if you can. Counselor Stefano?
I just wanted to add, it is great to go to these meetings. The governor had a lot to say about some different things also, but the housing thing really struck a nerve, because we really do need housing, if you look around our city, affordable housing that people can afford. But it was a great meeting, and feel honored to go and learn, man. It's just great to go and find out what's really going on in different cities and how they're doing it, and how we can benefit from their experiences, and it's really great. I'm glad I got to go.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Counselor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of economic development, the SLV Development Resource Group will be having their annual board meeting this Monday, February the twenty-third, from one until five P.M. I will be attending that meeting, and I'll have a lot to report back to you all on at our next meeting.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Is that it for committee reports? And we'll move on to staff announcements. Heather?
Well, we do have a few. I've been looking around. Chief Oaks is actually at the Police Chiefs Conference this week. In his place, Kenny Anderson has been serving. Kenny's actually not here, because today was our first day that we had the K-9 unit deployed, and we got our first hit on the first day. So that's actually why Chief Anderson's not here. They're following up with the warrant and the additional man effort that's going to be required to get that secured. So that is where he is at. He also shared with us today that the training for the K-9 program usually takes a set number of months, but because they were very good at moving through it and moving to the next stage, they've actually finished the training early, which is why we were able to get them back in Alamosa and working. So there is some excitement and more information to come from that situation. We've received several questions over the last several months of the elevator at the rec center. I'm happy to report that it is working. We are still tying up some loose ends, but the elevator's working and the public can use it. So thankfully, that project should be closed out very soon. At four o'clock, we had a meeting today in regards to the Pink Elephant Building and the demolition. There has been a last-minute snag with one of the state inspectors. Randy is working diligently to try to get that resolved. We went ahead with our four o'clock meeting to get all the contractors on the same page of when we're going to start, if it's Saturday, what the flow of traffic, the staging of the trucks, where the access is, where they exit, all of those types of things, working out and making sure everyone's on the same page for those details. If we cannot get these last-minute snags worked out, then it would be the next weekend that they're going to have to move forward. But I know Randy's moving heaven and earth at this point to get it to where Saturday we start to see that building coming down. If you haven't driven by, you will notice that the fencing is up, it is closed off, and they're getting ready to start the work. So that's an update on the Pink Elephant. Looking at the council calendar, just a reminder that this Saturday, we do have the retreat. That agenda's posted at the same location as the other agendas with some backup information. I do anticipate it to be a full day, starting at eight and probably going until five, depending on conversation. We will be ordering lunch and can work through that timeframe. So we have a lot of different topics, and staff's been working hard to pull that information together. Additionally, before your next city council meeting, we have scheduled the work session to discuss the ice rink. That group will be doing a presentation to the recreation board on Monday. Take that input, fold it into the presentation that they make to you at that work session. So that's one thing coming up. We had sent an email out to you in regards to the CML conference registration. If you can get that form completed and turned into the clerk's office, they can register you as you come in. CML did have a notice on their website that sometimes the lunches can fill up, so if that's something you're planning on doing, you might want to try to get that in so we can get you registered. Tomorrow, I will be attending a luncheon with Congressman Tipton. I think he's in the area to talk about economic development with some different groups. The manager conference, statewide manager conference, is next week, so I will actually be out of town Wednesday through Saturday. And the other item that's coming up fairly quickly is the Chamber Annual Meeting is on March sixth, and I think we sent that out as a notice. And from a staff perspective, I think that's everything we have.
Thank you, Heather.
What was that, the last meeting?
The Chamber Annual Meeting. So they'll have, at the beginning, a small section for business, but then the rest of it will be on the train, and everyone was invited.
Sixteenth, right?
March sixth, the business starts at five-thirty. I think the train ride starts at seven.
Thank you, Heather. Next up, we have counsel comment. Does anyone have a comment? Counselor Grego?
Yes, I did. Here last week, I got invited to a, several churches got together and met over at the Sacred Heart Church at their fireplace, and they met to discuss a big problem that we have here in our community, and that's what is substance abuse. We had close to about a hundred people there, and everybody shared stories how they were, how some of their loved ones have fallen into these problems of drugs and alcohol and everything that we have, that we've been having here in this community, and more so the drug problem. So I was so happy now to hear what you said, Heather, where our dog is fast at work at doing this. But I told them, eventually, once they get together, they need to come to counsel. Maybe they have some kind of public hearing. I says, the only time, I says, we've, in thirty years that I've been on this council, that we've had anybody come to counsel, at least to talk about a problem like this, is when we were talking about marijuana, and they were here to talk in support of it, you know? So I advise them, I says, you need to get together, and we welcome you to come and share those comments with us and bring it to the attention of the whole community, you know? And I also emphasize that next time you see some activity around your house, call the cops, you know? We need your help, you know? We can't cover everything. So all you have to do is just get on the phone, call the cops, and one by one, I think we can resolve this eventually, you know? But it was quite a meeting, and to see all the different, and it's great to see that all the different churches get together and when there's an issue like this, and they discuss it and bring it to the people's attention, so. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Grego, for attending. I saw some constituents this weekend who told me that they saw you there, so they really appreciate your presence. On a lighter note, the San Luis Valley Theater Company is having a murder mystery dinner at the Grill at Cat-tails on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth of the end of this month, and I would like to encourage you all to come out there and support them. I will be participating in the play as well, so hopefully I get to see your faces in the place. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. This evening, we have, unless there are any other comments, we have a need for an executive session. Executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four-six-six oh two, four A, to discuss acquisition of property interests related to stormwater infrastructure negotiated with the El Milagro subdivision pursuant to CRS twenty-four-six-six oh two, four E, to determine positions and instruct negotiators related to such acquisition, and pursuant to CRS twenty-four-six-six oh two, four B, to receive legal advice from the city attorney relating to the legal implications of acquisition of such property interests. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll go ahead, instead of reading that whole thing again, I'll make the motion that we go ahead into executive session pursuant to what you just described, Mayor.
Second. I have a motion and a second on our executive session. Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We will move into executive session, Ruth, and afterwards, we'll go into regular session where we will not discuss any regular business. Thank you.